We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for November 27, 2023. Just before we go into that meeting, it is my privilege to acknowledge the Employee of the Month, Mr. Darren Murrell. Darren could not be with us tonight, but we thought it would be appropriate that we would recognize him as this month's Employee of the Month. Darren Murrell was selected as employee for the month of November 2023. Darren has worked for the City of Muskogee just over 26 years and currently holds the role of Utility Field Technician One in the Revenue Division of the City Clerk's Department. This is Darren's second time being recognized as Employee of the Month. In his free time, Darren enjoys fishing, watching NASCAR, and is a Dallas Cowboys fan. He likes to spend time grilling and smoking food, but most importantly, he likes spending time with his family. Darren was nominated by his supervisor, Kenneth Claypool. Kenneth said that Darren has stepped up significantly over the last several months. Darren has done all assigned work in a timely manner and has gone above and beyond. Darren has always had a positive attitude, and Kenneth feels Darren is very deserving of Employee of the Month. Darren does not do anything that is asked less of him; he does everything that is above. Please join me in celebrating Employee of the Month, Mr. Darren Murrell. Let me also take this opportunity to say that since we're talking about Employees of the Month, that we want to be very mindful and courteous and grateful to all of our city employees within the City of Muskogee. I think it goes unnoticed several times that our employees work very, very hard to do what they can to make our city great. Many times in the city government or municipal government, we talk about employees greatly in terms of complaints, in terms of when people are not satisfied with city services. But I want all of our city employees here tonight to know, as well as to those who may be watching from far and near, that we appreciate you, that as a community, as we go into the holiday season, we are grateful for all the work that our employees have done. For the last three and a half years that I've been Mayor, I would not have been able to do anything that I've done had it not been for the city workers and those who are employed by the City of Muskogee. So those who are here and those who are watching, I want you to also join me in applauding all of our staff workers and employees within the City of Muskogee. At this time, I'm going to ask that we stand for the invocation and flags. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you so much for this opportunity to serve your people. Father, we are grateful to be here on tonight, and I pray, oh Lord, that as we move forward with this agenda, as well as the agenda for the City of Muskogee, God, that our hearts and our minds may be focused on what's right for people. God, that we may work in their best interests, not the interest of ourselves. And God, that as we move forward at this time of year, Father, that we may be grateful for those that we serve. For, Lord, they could have chosen anyone else to serve in these seats and in this capacity, but they be like in us. And I pray, oh God, that we will do them the justice that they deserve. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Let's look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Alex Reynolds.
Amy Stout.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of October 23, 2023, or take other necessary action.
I believe those minutes appear in our packets on tonight. Do we have any discussion on those minutes, or do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on those minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending October 31, 2023, or take other Tracy McGee. necessary action.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of where you are, the claims for MMA, pension for
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Here.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
capital projects, $300,000, we do approve and be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for October 14, 2023, through November 17, 2023, or take other necessary action.
We have those claims that appear before us on tonight. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions on that report, or what's the pleasure of the body? Do we have any questions on the claims? Are there no questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion and a second on the claims.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on the claims. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes. Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig. Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos. Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Yes.
Tracy McGee. Tracy McGee.
Yes. Yes.
Alex Reynolds. Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Yes.
Amy Stout. Amy Stout.
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, that will conclude that agenda. Yes, that will conclude that agenda. We will now turn to the agenda for the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for November 27, We will now turn to the agenda for the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for November 27, 2023. 2023. Roll call. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Here.
Amy Stout. Amy Stout.
Here.
Here.
Alex Reynolds. Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Here.
Tracy McGee. Tracy McGee.
Here.
Here.
Tracy Hoos. Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Here.
Helen Boyadi Craig. Helen Boyadi Craig.
Here.
Here.
Patrick Cale. Patrick Cale.
Here. Here. Item number one. Item number one.
Consider approval of minutes of October 23, 2023, or take other necessary action. Consider approval of minutes of October 23, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Minutes for that meeting appear in our packets. Minutes for that meeting appear in our packets. Do we have any questions on the minutes? Do we have any questions on the minutes? If there are no questions, do we have a motion to approve? If there are no questions, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve. I move to approve.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call. Roll call.
Patrick Cale. Patrick Cale.
Yes. Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig. Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes. Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos. Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Here.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for October 14, 2023, through November 17, 2023, or take other necessary action.
We have those claims that appear before us on tonight. Do we have any questions on the claims? Are there no questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on the claims. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. That closes that agenda. We will now turn to the agenda for the Muskogee City Council for November 27, 2023. We will consider approval of the minutes for the special call City Council on October 9, 2023, and City Council regular session October 23, 2023. Those minutes appear in our packets. Do we have any questions on those minutes? Are there no questions on the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the minutes are approved. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items one through 10. Are there any items that need to be moved to the regular agenda?
Perfect.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We will now go on to number 11.
Receive presentation on Captive Air Incorporated and its recent expansion in Muskogee, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the City of Muskogee contracts with Port Muskogee to conduct industrial development activities on our behalf. We focus a lot, or the public attention often gets focused on recruitment of businesses for investment and job creation, but what we want to make sure we don't overlook is retention and, of course, expansion of existing businesses. So today, we're here to celebrate local business. Captive Air has recently completed a $30 million expansion that added 80 good-paying jobs in Muskogee. We are very excited that we were able to help bring to town or to make that happen here rather than somewhere else. And I'd like to have Heather McDowell from Port Muskogee introduce us to our guests and hear a little bit more about the project.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mayor, and esteemed council. My name is Heather McDowell. I'm Director of Economic Development at Port Muskogee. It's an honor to be here tonight to celebrate Captive Air's expansion. As you know, last year, we announced that they would be expanding their Muskogee location with a roughly $30 million capital investment and up to 80 new jobs. In fact, last year, it was one of the state's largest expansion announcements. It's an honor to have them here with us tonight. It's always exciting when we make these announcements to see the projects come full circle and come to fruition. We were able to see that on October the 24th at their grand opening that they held. Tonight with me, we have Plant Manager Shane McCullough, as well as Plant HR Administrator Teresa Enhoff. I'm going to step over and let them say a few words, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that projects like those are not able to happen without the full support of our city, our city foundation, the state, the county, with all of us working collectively together. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. McCullough.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Just wanted to take a few minutes and say thank you for all the support from the city. It's an exciting project. We have a wonderful new expansion and facility. We've built a lot of the utilities, the conditioning units, the ductwork that you see in our facility. So it's good to see that. The jobs that we're adding, we're excited to have new folks join our team. We plan to add more over the next few months as our product line, our assembly lines expand. We recently approved, got another approval for another $7.5 million of additional equipment. So again, just looking forward and excited for the growth here in Muskogee. Thank you.
Any questions for us?
Do we have any questions for our guests on tonight? If there are any questions, let me take this opportunity to say that we're just so grateful to have these types of opportunities in the City of Muskogee. For a community our size, Shane, for you guys to do what you're doing, this is a huge project. I also want to give our thanks to the City of Muskogee Foundation for their business opportunities that are available through their grant processes so that we can continue to have these types of expansions. And to all of those who are watching or who will see these comments on tonight, it's good to know that there are job opportunities available in Muskogee. So many people think that the jobs are not there. All they have to do is visit, I'm sure, with Ms. Enhoff, who is going to be facilitating those applications for those who would like to work at such a great and growing company here in the City of Muskogee. So thank you all very much. Any other comments? Thank you all. Item number 12.
Consider approval of the appointment of Eric Elgin to the Muskogee City-County Court Authority and Muskogee City-County Trust Court Authority to fill the unexpired term of John Shilt commencing upon appointment and ending on August 31, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Boyadi Craig.
Yes, this is my appointment, and it is with great pleasure that I move for the approval of Eric Elgin for this board.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 13.
Consider approval of proposed ordinance number 4215A, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 7, smoking and tobacco, Section 54-313, receipt of tobacco products or vapor products by a minor, providing for repealer, severability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowden Hammer.
Thank you, Mayor. My Deputy City Attorney, Austin Wittes, would present this ordinance tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So this is still the same ordinance that was brought up during the November 13 Public Works Meeting. At the time, there were a few questions regarding the tobacco use cessation programs utilized by the court. Currently, the court is utilizing one program through Muskogee High School for high school students, and there's a second program being offered through Neighbors Building Neighborhoods for minors that are no longer in high school, so people aged 18 to 20. There are also two online options offered through the state, but those have not been utilized yet because we've already had the issue of somebody from another town. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this agenda item, or what's the pleasure of the body?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the item. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 14.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4216A, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Building and Building Regulations, Article 3, Building Code and Regulations, Section 18-188, Public Nuisance Review Committee established and created, Composition, Meetings, Homagation of Rules, Section 18-190, duty to serve as administrative hearing board on certain matters, and Section 18-191, Appeals, providing for repealer, severability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So again, we heard this item on the November 13 Public Works Committee. Just a little recap on this. This amendment will adjust how the Public Nuisance Review Committee operates and also bring some language up to current. The biggest change in this is that we are going to eliminate self-imposed automatic appeal for high weeds and grass and trash and debris, which will allow our code enforcement officers to more quickly have those properties that have not been voluntarily abated or asked for an extension to be sent to our city contract for cleanup. It will speed up the process of getting trash and debris done through anywhere between five and 10 days quicker than it was currently being done now. The other option is that, the other change is that the process for dilapidated personal property, before we moved to Public Nuisance Review Committee and then straight to the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board, we have amended it to where the dilapidated personal property will go to and be decided on by the Public Nuisance Review Committee, and any appeal will be heard by the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board. And so that makes that the first and hopefully only stop for dilapidated personal property. With that, the staff recommends approval. We'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. King. We've heard this presentation. In addition to the summary that was offered on tonight, what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 15.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4217A, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Building and Building Regulations, Article 9, Uniform Building Code Appeals, Section 18-487, ex officio members, Section 18-488, meetings, procedural rules, and Section 18-490, powers and duties, providing for repealer, severability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
So this item is the partner item to the previous agenda item. This one addresses the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board. This takes out some language where there is an appeal that can be made on high weeds and grass and trash and debris, and also amends that language around the dilapidated personal property. That way, those processes are heard of the Public Nuisance Review Committee, and then appeals are heard by the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board, and then it also just makes some language current. And so with that, I will staff against approval, and we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have any questions on this agenda item?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on item number 15. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We will now entertain a motion for emergency.
Some emergency. Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare an emergency. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 17.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2966, directing the filing and notification of the publication of Supplement Number 24 to the Muskogee City Code of Ordinances, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Tracy.
This is my item. It's just a housekeeping item. This will just adopt all of our ordinances into our codebook through May of 2023, ordinance 4195A. We do this every year.
Thank you. Do we have a question on this item? Are there no questions? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 17. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We will now entertain a motion for emergency.
Some emergency. Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare an emergency. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We will now entertain a motion for emergency.
Some emergency. Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare an emergency. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 17.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2966, directing the filing and notification of the publication of Supplement Number 24 to the Muskogee City Code of Ordinances, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Tracy.
This is my item. It's just a housekeeping item. This will just adopt all of our ordinances into our codebook through May of 2023, ordinance 4195A. We do this every year.
Thank you. Do we have a question on this item? Are there no questions? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 17. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 18.
Receive a report on the adult and juvenile community service program, and take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowden Hammer.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to have Leslie Arnold of Paralegal present the report. She manages the community service program.
Arnold.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm very excited to have an opportunity to provide a report to you about the city's adult and juvenile community service program. The program began as a discussion that former city attorney Roy Tucker and myself had regarding our citizens and some of the problems that they were facing and the ability to pay for their fines and fees. This program, while it is the main function of the city attorney's office and has been since 2012, is a program that is citywide in its outreach. The program allows individuals to perform community service in satisfaction of fines ordered by the City of Muskogee Municipal Court. Studies show that offenders who complete rehabilitative community service are more likely to be removed from the court dockets, change their attitudes and behaviors, and move on to new and constructive activities. This is especially true when they're first-time offenders. Since its inception, the community service program has served the citizens of, excuse me, has saved the citizens of Muskogee over 1.15 million in court costs, therefore preventing defendants from being arrested and jailed based solely on their inability to pay. I prepared a brief PowerPoint that I'd like you all to look at with a few of the statistics to show what we've done. And I've never done this, Avery. Can you show me how to do this?
This one moves forward. This one moves back.
Okay. So, here we go. The Adult and Community Service Program, we've been in operation since 2012. In that time, we've had over 11,000 participants, which I'm very proud of that number, 117,000-plus hours. We have reduced the amount of jail time by over 1,600 days. We have saved the city, in taxpayer dollars, over $65,000 in jail fees. Our program operates Monday through Thursday, and for the adults, Saturday and Sunday for the juvenile program, which both programs, after COVID is over, are now thriving once again. We offer $15 per hour credit towards their fines. We provide supervision, all the transportation, all the equipment to do every project. We have now two 15-passenger vans, a truck and a trailer. We also do roadside pickup for folks. We help veterans, the elderly, whatever the case may be. If we're driving down the road and we see a mattress or dilapidated furniture, we pick it up. We haul it to the dump. No cost to the consumer or to the customer. It's just something we do that we know that it's trash and needs to be hauled off. Since its inception, the community service program has allowed impoverished citizens of Muskogee County to save over $1.15 million in court fines and fees that they may have been unable to pay, as well as the beautification of our community as a benefit for their hard work. This program has been made available through a grant through the City of Muskogee Foundation and has been since 2012, and we are very, very appreciative of that. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on the presentation on tonight?
I'd just like to take a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say thank you for your program.
Thank you.
You helped save citizens.
Very proud of this program, yes.
Other comments?
Great job. Thank you.
It's the pleasure of the body. I'd like to also, Ms. Bowden Hammer, have us give you direction as staff to see how we can expand this program further by looking at the other outstanding debts that the city has for those individuals that may qualify for this program. We certainly understand that our job or our goal is to put people to work, not to put them in jail, because they're not productive, they're behind bars. And so let us all agree, if that's okay with the council, to give direction to staff to look at how to expand the program, to positively impact those people who have other outstanding debts to the city as well.
Well, thank you.
Good?
Good.
Item number 19.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Olson Engineering for the design of a new wastewater treatment plant, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Rigney.
Yes, so I will be fairly brief here. We do have a PowerPoint that staff is going to go over after, I think it pertains to this and the next agenda item. The city did go out for an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications to procure an engineer to design a new wastewater treatment plant. We did have a selection committee that consisted of me, Mike Stewart, Jeff Reeves, and Scott Fletcher, who is our Pollution Control Superintendent. We had two engineering firms that we interviewed, and they each partnered with someone else because this is a very big job. We asked questions pertaining to the design, the functionality, and the process as it pertains to the new construction and design of a wastewater treatment plant. The selection committee is recommending Olson, who has partnered with Hub. Olson is out of Joplin, but they have offices in Tulsa, and Hub is out of Muskogee. We had a very close decision. We had two very qualified firms, but at the end of the day, based off of the answers to the questions that we asked in our interview, some after-construction training, advanced procurement, and some of the background work that Hub has already done as it pertains to writing our engineering report and assisting in the plant as it is current, we did opt to choose Olson and Hub as the engineers for this project, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
So I would like to add that these were very close interviews, and both companies brought the presentation to the table. With the location of Keith Beatty, who is going to be the project manager, Keith is out of Tulsa, and he's going to be the lead on this from Olson Engineering, and Keith is here tonight. Clayton Christie is our liaison from Olson, who we work with on many projects. They also have just received our TAP grant, which is that sidewalk project we're working on. They're currently managing the Smith Ferry Road, the detention basin, and the stormwater influence out in Orchard Parkway. With that, the addition of Steve Tolliver and Sam Stratton from Hub brought that local aspect to it, so all of them together are very close to where the sewer plant will be built. So that was what swayed actually my decision, was the fact that we needed more local representation. The other company that was involved in this is Cowan Group, who is doing the majority of our water projects. So we did have four good engineering companies. As Avery said, they partnered together, the other ones to make two pairs of engineering companies. Very proud to award this or to recommend you, and that's Olson and Hub. And like Avery, I'll answer any questions. But there was a lot of thought went into this. We did do our homework, and we feel like the best team to the table for you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the body, or what is your pleasure?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Helen Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Amy Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 20.
Hold a public hearing to discuss proposed water and sewer rate increases relating to the water meter replacement project and new wastewater treatment plant project, and provide direction to staff.
We will now open a public hearing. Let me say in advance of receiving information on tonight that this body will not be voting on this presentation tonight. This is just the public hearing. We will take up this action item for final consideration at the December 11 meeting. Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. This is a very important project, and you've heard that we've heard that we're in the process of selecting our engineers to conduct a really major project for the city of Muskogee, and we're pretty excited about it. And I want to start off talking about our strategic plan, because this council set up a strategic plan and listed off our top four strategic plan priorities, and streets and infrastructure were number one on the list. And so, we're happy that we've got a couple of different infrastructure projects to bring to you tonight to talk about how we can make them happen and how we can get them done. And so, those are the sewer plant and also a funding plan for our water meters. So, we'll take those one by one. Again, not voting on things, just to give the background and make sure we're all headed in the same direction, know why we're headed there, and how we're going to get there together. So, we've been treating sewage, basically, in Muskogee for a hundred and twenty years. We've gotten better at it since nineteen oh four. I'm happy to say that. And we all understand that we want the people that are further up the river than us to do a really good job putting stuff back in the river. And we owe that to the people downriver from us to do a really good job, you know, putting our waste into the river as well. So, in nineteen, in the fifties, we built our first really major modern plant in the nineteen fifties. And since then, we've updated it every twenty or thirty years and tried to update the technology, tried to update the capacity. And so, we did that in the seventies. We did that in the nineties. And we were using a technology called a trickling filter as part of our process. So, we'll talk more about that as we go. But before we get too far, I want to turn it over to Mr. Rigney and Mr. Stewart to walk you through what the sewer plant is, what it does, and what it looks like. It's important, I think, when we're talking about this. So, this is the big picture, where it's at. You can see kind of this, the street there is Hancock, if you're trying to orient yourself. The street there, kind of at the bottom of your screen. And then, on the bottom left is the raw sewage lift station and pump station. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stewart and Avery. They can kind of talk you through what you're looking at and what the individual things are, so.
All right. So, this is the raw sewage pump station. This is where our two main interceptor lines come into one, and this is where the sewage goes into the plant. At this point, it will enter into the plant or go to the FEBs, which is a flow equalization basin to be held to be treated later. So, like Mr. Miller said, that's down here on the bottom left of the picture, and it goes from there to the Headworks Building. At the Headworks, this is our first spot where we start treating. So, in this building, there's a deep grater. There is a bar screen and a screw conveyor. So, what that rake, that bar screen and rake does is it takes all of the things that are not sewage, trash, flushable wipes, anything like that, and it gets them out, and it takes it to a dump truck, and that dump truck goes to landfill and disposes of the trash. And then, at that point, the sewage goes into the rest of the process, and its next step is to go to the primary clarifier. And the primary clarifier is basically where it all settles down and separates itself from liquids and solids, and then it goes to a couple of different places. And we won't get overly technical on you, but next we'll talk about the secondary clarifier, so I believe this is the next slide. And that is kind of the final step. It's a more finalized process than the primary clarifiers, but it does separate again. And after this point, it is either deemed sludge, goes back to our drying beds, or it is the water, and that is treated with chlorine, and then goes to the disinfection basin, and then out to the river. So, thank you, Mr. Rigney. And so, there is a lot that goes into it, and they've
done a really good job making it where I can understand it, which I greatly appreciate. So, there's a lot of science into what happens when you flush your toilet and what happens to the waste before it gets to the river. And so, we take that pretty seriously. And so, in two thousand and seventeen, we started, again, about every twenty, thirty years, major upgrades and try to improve the plant. We did a whole lot of new stuff at the raw sewage pump station, new pumps, new screens, actuators, valves, gates. And then, in two thousand and nineteen, something happened. We're all aware. We had a major flood, and in fact, it inundated these six buildings with up to six feet of water. And so, that really put, instead of us moving forward with our two thousand and seventeen improvements, we kind of moved backward because, quite honestly, for a few months, our plant was completely inoperable. It was underwater, and then it was all flooded out. We had to do emergency repairs. And so, this is, again, an idea generally, what areas of the plant flooded. And so, what you'll see is, you know, the downhill stuff. Our river is a little bit to, you know, the right of your screen, a little bit further to the east. And so, when we build our new plant, it's going to be uphill. It's going to be on the higher ground. So, that's part of the reason that we're in the situation that we're dealing with. Along the way, while we were trying to recover from that, we had a winter storm, Winter Storm Ivan in two thousand and twenty-one, where we had multiple weeks with a temperature below zero, and that, all kinds of numbers on our, all kinds of water pipes all over town, including this system out at the treatment plant. Oh, by the way, COVID was going on during all this. So, we're trying to deal with three major national disasters all at once at our sewer plant and try and get things running. And so, every year, the Department of Environmental Quality comes in as a compliance evaluation inspection, a CEI. They come out and say, hey, how you doing? And they've been coming out, and they've been telling us you need to get better. Well, they came out in March of two thousand and twenty-one, right after the huge freeze in February, while we're still trying to recover from the flood and while, and while we're having problems with all the supply chain issues, even when we're trying to fix stuff, we couldn't get all the things that we needed. So, in two thousand and twenty-one, they came back and said, well, y'all aren't doing very well. And we're like, yeah, we know. We have these reasons. And so, in November, they sent us a consent order. And that means do better. You have to do better. We're going to start fining you. And they did. And we said, we appealed that. We said, hold on, remember about the flood. And they're like, yeah, we were wondering about that. You had like three or four months where it looked like you weren't treating sewage at all. Like, we were not. And the excuses, they didn't like natural disasters being excuses. They said, you have to do better. And excuses weren't cutting it anymore. So, we've gone back and forth. We've worked with them for a newly proposed timeline. Basically, they said, get some engineers to put a plan together to make it work, make it better. So, we did that. We meet all those deadlines. We're not getting fined currently. In September, they sent us a letter, which is right here. I'll pass it on. Sent a letter to Mayor Coleman saying, hey, here's what we need you to do, and here's the timeline we need you to do it in. We said we need a little different timeline. And so, this last week, they gave us, let's get them forward. This last week, we received word from DEQ that they verbally agreed to our original timeline. So, when you look at the letter, you'll see the mayor's initialed on that. We've signed off on it. We're going to send it back to them. And so, that timeline is now approved, and it looks a little bit like this. So, it looks like we need to get our engineers hired and started and underway. We're reviewing that. And we've done that process the way we did so that we could be eligible for more federal funding opportunities to try and pay for this plant or other related capital expenses. So, we've been nodding our eyes and crossing our teeth. DEQ is fine with us. They're not, they're fine, meaning they are not fining us. They are okay with how we're progressing. But they need to see us keep progressing. And that's part of what we're having this hearing for, is to say, okay, we know what we need to do. We're going to, and what we need to do is build that new sewer plant. We've hired engineers, or we're in the process of hiring engineers to do, to build it on that higher land that it's not going to flood. We do that for a lot of reasons that DEQ says, but we need to do it for a lot of other reasons, too. So, one of those reasons, I want to go through those and spend a little bit of time on those. One of those reasons is we need to stop trying to fix a seventy-year-old plant, right? It was built in the fifties. And I got a little bit ahead of myself, and so I'm going to go backwards. But we are going to get rid of a trickling filter. I mean, it's an obsolete practice, and we're the last one in the state. We don't need to be on, holding on to the old technology. The state says you can't. We don't have a choice. But it's a good opportunity for us to, instead of being the oldest and most obsolete, we can be cutting-edge and newest and doing the best. It's going to provide us opportunities for industrial expansion. It's going to provide opportunities for us to increase our capacity so that we can add housing stock. So, all of these are good things that we're going to be able to do that we might not have been otherwise. We put it off as long as we could. We didn't want to have to try and, try and replace this because it's a big project. But when it gets down to it, it's a really great opportunity, especially for economic development. I wish Heather was still here. She would nod her head. Some of our industrial partners in the last month have been asking, if we come here, can you handle this much wastewater? Can you treat this much? Can you do this? And right now, the answer is, we're going to be able to, right? We're going to get there. And that's what this does. So, it's really a great economic development opportunity as well. So, I'm going to pause here. We have some guests with us. They're going to help talk to us a little bit about what the state looks at. Nate Ellis and Alan Brooks are here. They're going to talk to us a little bit about why we need to keep moving forward now, why the timeframe sooner is better, and give us kind of the state's perspective and how we can get from where we're at today a little bit further down the road.
Come on. My name's Alan Brooks. I'm with the Public Finance Board Group. This is my partner, Nate Ellis. Well, Mike eloquently pointed out the fact that you need, that this is an opportunity, you need to do it, but the reality is you have to do it, okay? Comment on the timeline that was approved with DEQ. That's the timeline you need to meet so you don't get fined again. In talking with staff and in talking with your engineers, we feel like that there's a necessity to move as quickly as you possibly can. As you probably know, I mean, in your personal lives, everything's getting more expensive, whether it's your groceries or whatever you might buy. Unfortunately, what we're seeing as it relates to capital projects like these, they're getting more expensive at a faster pace, and we don't see that slowing down. There's a lot of federal funds allocated to various projects around the state, around the country, and a lot of those funds have been allocated, but they haven't been implemented yet. In other words, the projects haven't started. We feel like the longer the process takes, the more expensive the plant becomes. And so, there's an urgency, not only from the standpoint of meeting DEQ's schedule, so you don't find there's an urgency in the sense you have to do this, you need to do this, you want to do this, and the quicker you can get it done, hopefully the lesser cost will be. So, we keep that in mind as we move through the process. I guess the next point is, and I hope I'm not jumping ahead, but Mike, Mr. Miller's made the point that your sewer system needs to pay for your sewer system, or your sewer rates need to pay for your sewer system. Kind of general methodology is that your taxes, your sales taxes, you try to use those and pay for non-revenue-producing things, police, fire, parks, streets, things that don't generate revenue. Your water system, your wastewater system, you should charge rates that pay the cost to both operate those systems and pay debt services. Those facilities have to be improved over time. We have been in conversations the last several weeks with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. They would be the lender on this proposed project, if you allow us to move forward. The Oklahoma Water Resources Board has a program called their financial assistance program. We would anticipate or hope to file an application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the very near future, with the idea in mind that they would take this loan to their board for approval in January. Hopefully, we would have funding in place in February, that funding would, not only the project cost, but the cost of the engineering to do the final design on the project. Do you want to talk about rates at this point?
Yeah. So, thank you. What I appreciate that you brought to our attention is, we've got to the point, we've answered all DEQ's questions. They've answered all our questions. We have to now do things. And what they want to see us do is hire an engineer, and we're doing. What they want to see us do is get that plan and be able to pay for it and see how we're going to pay for the new plant that we are promising to build. And so, the way to do that, and Ms. Tracy's going to help us here, the way we do that is by having our sewer rates pay for our sewer. And so, you want to, Tammy, I don't know if you want the clicker, if you just want me to do it, but the idea is that we want to see what it would look like to have sewer revenues pay for sewer services, just as we've heard is best practice. And so, Ms. Tracy did a rate comparison with other communities, and she's brought that forward and wants to talk through that.
So, the proposed rate would be a three-year proposal. We would do a rate increase of seven seventy-five for a period of three years. You can see from the chart, we looked at municipalities around us, around our size. We are the lowest charging for sewer. We are way behind, way behind on that. And by raising that, you can see year one, it would raise that base rate up, and then you have year two and year three. Even at year, year three, it's just going to put us in the middle. It will not put us top of the list, but is also going to move us from the bottom and help us, help pay for this, this plant that we need. So, the seven seventy-five, like I said, would be a rate increase each year for a period of three years. It would not begin until October of two thousand and twenty-four. So, you would actually see that happen on your November bill. And Mr. Miller and I have put the numbers together and feel like this is a good, good proposal to, to help support this.
And we do believe that that's a number that will support the debt service needed to pay for the plant. And so, by implementing this, it sends the message to DEQ that we're going to do what we said, and they don't have to get out the fine book and start putting us on the bad list again. It keeps us progressing in the right direction. So, that's, Tammy covered kind of what's on our next slide. We use the sewer revenues to pay for sewer services. In three years, we won't be the cheapest. The reason that we're cheapest is we've been nursing a seventy-year-old sewer plant for a long time. And those other communities that have newer sewer plants, they're paying for those now. And so, we're going to be paying for ours in the future. And when we do, we're going to be paying similar sewer rates to what they're already paying and have been paying. So, we feel like this is, this is a fair way to get a really great asset for our community, for economic development. The idea is that, as the mayor said, December, we would be able to adopt these rates, but they wouldn't need to be implemented until October of twenty-four. So, the urgency is not that we raise the rates. The urgency is that we show that we have the ability to repay the loan. And so, that is our opportunity to get that, you know, that kind of tight timeline to get the money and to get to Oklahoma Water Resources Board in January. And the sooner we have the money, the sooner we can build it, and we don't have to worry about the cost escalating. So, that's, that's kind of.
Time for you to pay off the loan.
This would be a thirty-year loan.
Thirty-year loan.
Yes, ma'am. In the economic life of the asset. As the city manager noted, these, you tend to look at these every thirty to forty years, and we would pay this loan in thirty years, and there should still be some economic life left in the project.
So, so we've got a good plan to get where we need to be, and we're going to have a really good result when we get there. And it's fair to our citizens, and it's going to be a great asset to our community. So, that's where we're headed. I want to have to answer any questions, discussion. And this is just to talk about tonight. We've got, we'll talk about the water meters here in a second, but we'll just talk, anything that y'all want to know or more questions or information that you might want to have between now and December eleventh, as we prepare to take this big step, an exciting new step for the city.
One of the questions I have, if we get into a situation where the rates come in better than the cost of the project, is the opportunity there for us to pay this off sooner than thirty years?
Yes, there is. Under this program, it's prepayable after ten years. The advantage of this funding under the financial assistance program is this money is available for a wide range of water, wastewater, and drainage improvements. So, if we end up, the plant comes in under the engineer's estimated budget, then that, that additional money or extra money can be used for water line improvements, you know, water treatment plant improvements, engineering, drainage improvements. It's a very flexible funding source. So, you would likely spend on other water sewer-related projects, but there is an option after ten years to prepay the note. The advantage of that is, I mean, if rates are lower ten years from now, and it would leave us with the opportunity to potentially refinance and restructure the debt at a lower interest rate. That is a positive of this program.
We know what the interest rate is now, sir?
We don't. We wouldn't know that interest rate until after the water board approved their loan, approved the loan at their January board meeting. We probably knew something in January. When we ran the rates initially, we were thinking in the five point two percent range is what we're estimating. So, again, we'll know that definitively in January or end of January.
Other comments from the body or questions? Of course, we'll have another two weeks to explore this further. I think that one of my colleagues was also interested in being certain that when we do have the discussion on the eleventh, that we also include in our discussion the possibility of looking at other grant opportunities that may be available. of looking at other grant opportunities that may be available under the upcoming Infrastructure Act from Congress, because that's one-time money that will never be circulated again. And so we'll be looking at that as well.
Another positive of this program, let's say $10 million came available or something, an amount of 90 through a grant program, that would again free up $10 million in this project or in this funding for other needed city projects. So that would certainly complement what we're proposing to do.
Yes, Mayor, point well taken. The city is, we absolutely are going to continue to seek all grant funding options, but the people that are loaning us the money don't want to wait to see whether we get the grant or not. They want to make sure we're going to be able to pay it back with these revenues. And if we don't, if we can pay it back with other funding sources, all the best.
Other comments from the body?
It's 80 million now, right? Is that the number we're shooting at?
Actually, the number I think we'll be coming back with is not to exceed 82 million.
Not to exceed 82 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions, other comments?
So our second, thank you, our second topic under infrastructure, capital improvements, is about our water meters. And I'll try and be quick, but about getting close to 20 years ago, more than 15, we were one of the first cities to get automated water meters. And now pretty much every city in Oklahoma does. But that also meant we were one of the first cities to have our water meters, you know, start to expire. Well, unfortunately, we didn't come up with a way, a funding mechanism to replace these meters as they have started expiring. And so we've had to replace them on an ad hoc basis. An Alex, Tammy Tracy, about two or three years ago, she was like, Mike, if we stop getting water revenue, we're going to be in trouble. If the meters don't work, we don't know what to charge people. So we reallocated some money from all of our Water Resource Board loans and replaced about half our meters. This body approved that, and we did that. And we said, well, we don't know where we're getting the other half. And then we got some ARPA money, and we said, well, we can pay for about another 25%. And so both of those are not funding sources that we can depend on to replace them 10 or 15 years from now. And so as we did with the sewer plant, we're trying to make lives better for the people that are coming after us. This is an opportunity for us to do that with the water meters as well, because we want, we don't want the next round of water meters to be financed for 30 years, even though they're only going to last 10 or 15. We did that with half our water meters. That's not a solution that we wanted. It was the only one we had at the time. We don't want to depend on a worldwide pandemic to give us one-time funding that we use to buy the other 25% of the meters. We need a better plan. And so again, working with Tammy, looking at other cities, we've come up with a solution that should allow us to fund replacement as we go rather than having to worry about this now and in the future, because we're still looking at those of the 25% of the meters that are past their expiration date and can go anytime. So using the same theories, we want to use water revenues to pay for water meters. Again, Tammy did rate comparisons, looked at other similar communities just like we did for sewer rates and all, how we came to this number.
So again, we compared the same cities that we used for the sewer comparison. What we're proposing on this, we looked at what it costs to replace the meters, the MXU, and the actual installation of the meters. Once we did the math, we realized that we probably do a flat one-time rate increase to the base rate of $4. That would raise our base rate to 5115, as you see on the chart here. We're not at the lowest end, but we're not at the highest end either. By doing this $4 one-time rate increase, that would put us about middle of the road, and it would ensure that that money is there in 10 years to replace the meters that we're struggling to replace now. Again, this rate increase would not take effect until October of '24. That's when we did the sewer increase. And we just feel like it's a good option to help those in the future to ensure there's funding to replace the meters that we know are going to expire at some time and will need to be replaced. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Tracy?
So that's it. I just would love to have your feedback between now and December 11th. We will have some appropriate ordinances and resolutions and documents for these proposals to implement on December 11th. And we wanted to make sure that there was, rather than a committee meeting, usually we would do it at a committee meeting and then a council meeting. The way this falls, we wanted to make sure that you were able to hear, the public's able to hear this twice, about how we're going to get some very good solutions long-term and invest in our community that will leave us better off for generations. I'm excited about it. And we'll bring this forward on December 11th. If you've got questions between now and then, just let me know.
We have no residents signed to speak to this item on tonight. We will close the public hearing. Haven't heard no other discussion. During the opportunity for that from the council, we will now move on to item number 21.
Consider approval of City Council Policy 3-3-7, limited emergency, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Boldenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed policy that replaces the policy that was rescinded on October 23rd, 2023. It was a COVID leave policy that provided up to 12 weeks of paid sick leave. This new policy that would take its place provides up to five days of paid sick leave with proof of medical authority, or medical personnel, that the employee is suffering from COVID. And also then they mask for five days upon return to work. The reason for this is the CDC guidelines have changed. One of the things that I will point out is that per statistics research, you're five times more likely to be hospitalized with COVID than, for instance, the flu, and you're four times more likely to catch COVID than the flu. And this will help us, because we have a small staff, this will help us not lose our workers. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on item number 21, or what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
Sir, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flanery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
That's the item passes. Item number 22.
Consider approval to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute the renewal of the Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract with Signal Tech Incorporated, now Traffic Lighting Systems, which includes but is not limited to the repair, installation, maintenance, and 24-hour call for traffic signals and flashing school signals as recommended by staff, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
It's Mayor and Council. When we were looking at doing a renewal on this item, which is allowable under the current contract, we were notified by Signal Tech that they changed their name to Traffic Lighting Systems. So this contract that is, we're asking you to allow the manager to renew, has three basic changes. One is the name, changing it from Signal Tech to Traffic Lighting Systems. The other, we did add the City Manager's signature on that so that he's the one that will actually authorize the renewal. And the last one was one Ms. Bolden asked us to do, and that's to change item six, which is in the contract, which is the duration of the contract. And it is to make it go from our fiscal year, July 1 through June 30th, and before it didn't actually word it that way. So those are three basic changes, and there's no change in the fees or any other thing with this contract. This does let us manage 48 signalized intersections using traffic lighting systems and 33 school flashing signs. And again, they are on call to do our emergency repairs, which if you've been noticing, we just had to have one completed, which was out on Shawnee and Country Club, where we had one of our poles hit. And I don't know if you've noticed, but they came out and put two wood poles up and a wire span across it. Now we have signals hanging from the wire span, which will be replaced fairly quickly because we do have that signal project going on out there. But that's the thing Signal Tech does for us. Do recommend approval, and we'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do we have any questions on that item? What's the will of the body?
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 22.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flanery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 23.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid in the amount of $973,200 for the River Country Water Park renovation project from Allison Landscape and Pool Limited, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Anthus.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your time. My name's Kevin Anthus. I'm the Fitness and Aquatic Facility Manager for the Park Management Department. Hopefully, you've had time to read the background on this agenda item. But basically, this is a CIP-funded project from the 2019 CIP vote, as well as some funding from the City of Muskogee Foundation. This will focus, or this piece of the project will focus on the renovation side of the water park out at Hat Box Complex. Recommend to accept the letter from the engineer that council voted on, and we've been working on with them since February. But if you saw the recommendation letter, we are recommending that we accept that as well as a piece to add back in. When the engineer wrote the bid, we were able to kind of add and subtract things to stay within budget and are recommending that for that total amount of the 973,200. Staff is recommending approval and would be happy to answer any questions on the project.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Okay, as I read the letter, and you look on the back of the page, and you have all these numbers, just so that I got a clarification here.
Sure.
They have just scratched out everything but two items off the back. Correct. They're calling them add-ons, but that paragraph, therefore, based upon the, we had received a review of the bid material and the budget. It is engineered to make the city of Muskogee make the award without bid items 101, 102, 201 through 208. This removed the pump replacement, the auto fuel addition, and the lazy river repair. My question is, what was the quote with that in it?
So the total quote for the lowest apparent bid from Allison Landscape is down at the bottom of the third page of the tabulation sheet. I believe it's $1,272,460 was the total quote for all of the items. But again, the way that the tabulation sheet was built, that the engineer created for us, we were able to kind of pull things out in order to be able to stay within our budget.
And will you explain why you did that?
Sure. So there are pieces of the water park that need to be, that are in more need of repair than others, and there are pieces, the pumps replacements specifically was something that, since we had this opportunity to have an engineer look at it and to have some real, you know, actual bids put on the replacements of each one of those pumps within the facility. We know, you know, now projecting maybe further into the future, if we need to put it onto some capital outlay projects, that we can replace those maybe on a rolling year basis. And so we kind of know what we're looking at in the future and what we can budget for.
So I think it was very wise. What they did is basically the engineer helped draft a capital plan. Here's everything that you need in the coming years. And we don't necessarily have to do it all at once. If we, and we were optimistic, like, we can do it. Let's see how much we can do. And that's why when you see the engineer's recommendation was 842, and we said, we've got a little more money, let's add to that, right? We can do a few more things on the list. And so, but it also gives us a plan, as Kevin said. In future years, we can say, all right, we know we're going to need a pump. We know it's going to cost about this much money. Let's budget for that as well.
I have a question. What do we replace besides the water park?
So kind of the basic overview, the biggest piece of this project is going to be interior shell replacement within the family leisure pool and the kiddie pool as well. So there's going to be a new tile ring as well. Some of the pool deck and pool shell are not, it's supposed to be a floating deck, sorry, without getting too technical on everything. It's going to fix the connection between the deck and the pool shell as well. So there'll be a new surface on the inside of both of the main bodies of water there, as well as replacing all the tile around. And then, as Mr. Miller pointed out, we will also add in the repairs to the lazy river as well. So there's concrete that's separating, delaminating, coming off. So there's going to be spots around the river that are replaced and then repainted as well.
What about the slides?
So the slides have been repainted within the last 10 years, but as far as maintenance on those, that's generally an annual waxing and things like that. But they're probably coming up for another paint within the next two to three years. That's something that can be budgeted out on an annual basis.
Only thing I remember about the slides was that at one time, the grooves that connect the slides were coming, not necessarily loose, but if you slid on them, they would pinch your back. So is that still a problem, or?
Not that I've had a report within the last season or two. Like I said, we did have, Slide Renew was the company that came out and did a repaint, did a recoat on both surfaces, outside and inside.
Thank you. Other questions from this body?
Are we going to get any new features added?
So the other piece of the plans coming from the engineer will be to provide us with what the future could hold, but we're hoping to look into future and find other funding if possible. The budget that we have right now, we decided we should focus on taking care of what we do have first, and then hopefully, yes, in the future, finding other funds to support that expansion.
And just so that I'm clear, our budget is what now? What is our budget right now?
Our budget right now is 1.1. So that's the 600 from the CIP and the 500 from the foundation funding.
1.1.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we're proposing to use 842?
The 973,200.
973,200.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let me say to the body also, in terms of future upgrades and renovations, the council will always have access to the Special Projects Opportunity Fund. In the event that is their priority to enhance the rides, council or stout, or add new rides, there will always be another opportunity for us to look at other funding that we have within ourselves, should we decide on that path. Other questions or comments from this body, or do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flanery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We do not have an executive item to be discussed on tonight. We have no persons have assigned to speak to us. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Thank you.
So that's it. I just would love to have your feedback between now and December 11th. We will have some appropriate ordinances and resolutions and documents for these proposals to implement on December 11th. And we wanted to make sure that there was, rather than a committee meeting, usually we would do it at a committee meeting and then a council meeting. The way this falls, we wanted to make sure that you were able to hear, the public's able to hear this twice, about how we're going to get some very good solutions long-term and invest in our community that will leave us better off for generations. I'm excited about it. And we'll bring this forward on December 11th. If you've got questions between now and then, just let me know.
We have no residents signed to speak to this item on tonight. We will close the public hearing. Haven't heard no other discussion. During the opportunity for that from the council, we will now move on to item number 21.
Consider approval of City Council Policy 3-3-7, limited emergency, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Boldenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed policy that replaces the policy that was rescinded on October 23rd, 2023. It was a COVID leave policy that provided up to 12 weeks of paid sick leave.[1790.26]